April 21st, 2020, city council meeting. I guess this is our second or two and a half, almost third virtual meeting. We recorded three meetings ago and last meeting was pre-virtual and I think we're getting a little bit more used to this. So anyway, thank y'all for joining us. If there's no objection because we are all in different, not in the same room, I'm gonna dispense with the prayer and the pledge. I didn't, I didn't realize I would actually miss those parts for our agenda, but I kinda do, but it's kinda hard to do that in this format. But I'll recognize, there's no objection to that, we'll move forward and I'll recognize Ms. Ramsey to call the roll.
Davis?
Be sure to unmute so you can say here.
Davis? St. Columbia?
Here.
Crockett?
Present.
Franklin? Ethel Lee?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Okay, Chris is trying to still get on, so I'm just missing Ms. Davis.
I'm here.
Okay, Chris. Okay, that's five present.
Okay, so we've got a court. Ms. Ramsey, do you wanna go see the minutes?
Did everybody get a chance to read your minutes or do you wanna move them to the 5th of May? Cause there was February the 18th, March 3rd, 10th, 31st, and April 7th. So did everybody get to read them?
I read them. I got them today and I read them. They're ready to move on, I'm fine with it.
And I'm... Yeah. I didn't read them all, but if, if the rest of you did, then I'm okay with it, even though. It was just two of you that didn't read them.
Joe? Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the, which one, you have to, all of them or can we do them all together?
No, we have to do them separate, February 18th is first.
Okay, February the 18th, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of February the 18th.
Sandy, Evangeline, if there was a meeting that I was not present, will you let me know so that I can abstain, please?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, there's been a motion in the second on the minutes of February 18th, call the roll.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin? St., uh, Crockett? Davis?
Yes.
Ford?
I was present, yes.
Yes ma'am. Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Okay, um, Davis? Six, okay, five yes.
I'm yes.
Oh, you're yes, okay. Alright, the next one is March the 3rd.
I'll make the motion on that one as well.
Okay, Ms. Ford, you were absent on March the 3rd.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ford?
Absent because of absence, yeah.
Right, gotcha. Davis? Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Okay, the next one, uh, March the 10th. Everybody was present.
I move that we accept the minutes of March the 10th.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, um, St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin? Crockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is March the 31st. Everyone was present.
Jill, St. Columbia makes a motion that we accept those minutes.
Okay, we do have one change to those minutes, the treasurer pointed them out to me. Hold on just a second. Page two in the second paragraph, it said, "The city attorney pointed out, in his opinion, passing the budget in..." "...that would automatically approve..." "...that would not automatically approve the items that exceeded the mayor's spending limit."
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
I hear you, but they didn't start doing it.
Isn't that right?
I don't, I don't remember saying that. I guess, what's the change he's trying to make?
Can you tell Chris that passing this budget limit would, would approve everything, how you put it?
Yeah, what I, what I said was, if you passed it, you're approving every over expenditure or anything that wasn't appropriated, is what I said.
Okay. Got it. Okay, I'll change that. Okay, I'm gonna call the roll. Ethel? Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
Davis? Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Hey, the last one is our April 7th meeting and, um, online was Davis, Ethel Lee, St. Columbia, Franklin. Forward, not online was Ms. Crockett. Okay, I have a motion.
I shall move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Alright, Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Okay. Franklin?
Yes.
Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crockett?
Absent.
Absent, okay. Alright, thank you and we won't get so far behind next time, it's my fault. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ramsey. So now, I'm gonna recognize, Mr. Turner, do you wanna discuss the treasurer's report?
The only thing in the treasurer's report that I want to bring to the council's attention is that, uh, you know, to monitor it and look... Basically, you look at the, um, there is the, there is the end of budget, what Ethel told us. And the, when, um, and if, uh, maybe, uh, see, uh, but then, uh, the two, uh, we have the fire department right now, they have, they have...
Hey, hey, Sandy, could you move your phone over to Derek so we can hear a little bit better? So, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm having a...
And, uh...
Just move it over.
Well, I didn't want to ever say...
We're looking at, we're looking at the same mic right now.
Can you hear me? Oh, that's Sandy.
Yeah. Are you on?
I can see myself. Hold on, maybe I don't have my... Wait, it says join audio, hold on a second. Can you hear me, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can wait and see and hear you now.
Okay.
And I'm gonna...
You know, be vigilant and monitoring the budget line items, uh, and, uh, to ask what results to what was budgeted. And, uh, I want to bring the attention to, I mean, actually, the fire departments. Uh, at the end of March, their, uh, actual budget, uh, their actual expenditures in overtime was a little bit over $67,000. You can see that on page five of the treasurer's report. And their, um, overtime at the end of March was $67,300 and... $0.50. And we had budgeted $100,000, so they only had $32,672.50 left for the rest of the year. Uh, and so they may probably exceed, if, exceed that in April, but if they keep going at the same rate. And I think $100 in January and $20,000 in February. And so, you know, they only have $32,000 more to go, so it's something we need to be aware of. Uh, so if they get close to a close to me, we may have to just tell them they can't get more overtime unless the council appropriates more. If they don't appropriate more, we should, you know, you can't pay them more overtime. And, um, as far as the police, it's cause they're doing a little bit better. Uh, at the end of March, the first quarter, they have $40,944 and $0.37, that's on page seven, overtime. And so they have, uh, $59,055 left and $100,000 that was budgeted for them. So they don't have, in March, they had $12,000 in February and $14,000 in January. So they're doing a little bit better than the fire department. But the fire department's getting close to, uh, coming closer to their budgeted limit for overtime. And so I just want to bring that to the council's attention. And make them aware, we'll probably have to make some decision regarding either, uh, some additional appropriations or telling the fire department that they can't, if they can't bring it, you know, in some kind of control, we're gonna have to stop overtime unless they get some more appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And thanks for our chat.
I'm good.
Thanks for that report on, on overtime and we, since the last meeting, uh, have identified those... Those people in each department who are monitoring overtime, particularly fire and police. And so I hope our, uh, reports, and I've been getting reports, so we have to see that track downward quickly. And we're getting, and Ms. Derek, and Mr. Turner, Ms. Ramsey, both have been good, also tracking it on payroll purposes, so thank y'all. Any questions of Mr. Turner on treasurer's report? Okay, if not, we're gonna move on, thank you, Mr. Turner. Discussion, curfew, and continuation, this is... Okay, so, uh, last Monday, and Andre's gonna, uh, Andre, be, be ready to help me out on some of this. Well, really, last Friday, I guess, I always see something like that, we started talking to the municipal league lawyers about the... Basically, what happened is the governor and the municipal league came to an agreement that if we would submit a curfew or executive order to them for the governor's lawyer and municipal league lawyer to review and basically vet it for, I think their chief, their chief concern was the issue of commerce, then, then they would not object to cities issuing curfews and, um, and similar things. But curfew is really what, what we were talking about. So, before the storm happened, actually, we submitted all that to municipal league and sometimes Sunday and Monday, we came up with, uh, both an executive order and an ordinance. What I'd asked them to do was a model executive order that, and a model, um, ordinance. I wouldn't necessarily say that's what this is, but where it comes from is the city of Little Rock because they were one of the first to do this and one of the first to get it to the governor and municipal league under this agreement with him to get it approved. So, then the storm happened Sunday night. We got the approval Monday morning. They, and I think this all went out in email, I'm not sure how, how much, how successful we were getting it to everybody, but, um, they always preferred ordinance, I always preferred ordinance, um, of the city council. So we have a, basically, the identical thing and this is where Andre can help out, but it's basically the identical, identical thing in the form of an ordinance. But especially with 80% of our power off in the city, uh, I really think we probably would have done this curfew anyway because it's actually for the other crisis, the COVID-19 crisis. And it's designed to, as you all know, try to keep people in, uh, and, and, and enforce the other, uh, mandates from the governor which, uh, they say state police, but as a matter of practicality, it's really the local police and sometimes the sheriff's office, um, that enforces all these things. We contact the health department and they give us guidance. Uh, almost every time, the first time is a warning, uh, sometimes the health department sends out somebody. They get further guidance from up to, I call it the local health, it really practically works. Somebody complains to me or somebody points out to me or the police point out to me some kind of a violation of governor's directive or now this executive order. Well, let's, let me stick with the governor's part. And I called Karen Hopper over at the health department, she, uh, runs it up the flagpole with her supervisor, calls me back and says, "This is how we would like to proceed." Depending on what the violation is, um, they, if it's a food type, like restaurant, store, that kind of thing, uh, they send a senatorian. But anyway, they send somebody out to examine it, make sure they're, they are in violation. Uh, sometimes they're not, actually, uh, but most of the time they are and they warn them. And then if there's a second violation, then they alert us whether or not to cite them. The citation for the governors, so there's some confusion, I think, but just so you know, the citation ultimately, this is the maximum. This is not by any means gonna happen in any, in every case. But if someone were just very obstinately ignoring the governor's directive, then I think it's up to a month in jail and a thousand dollar fine. Now, the curfew is, uh, what we did first of all, because, you know, it's especially with this storm. People didn't, didn't know about it, uh, really. And so we spent really the first week mostly just warning people and trying to educate people and inform people about it. I'm not aware of any citations that have been issued. Uh, I'll just say if they have been, I'm not aware of it. But now that we're into the second week, uh, we mainly, and, and even still, you know, they're gonna err on the side of, of, uh, providing warnings. That's how most cities, including Little Rock, have enforced this. However, if you get people who are routinely ignoring it, uh, sort of thumbing their nose at it, that kind of thing, then that's, I think, we're gonna see citations. The maximum on that's $500, not $1,000, it's, I've read that some places. Um, I think they're getting that mixed up with the governor's directive. We have, I'm not aware of any serious violations of it. Of course, we're limited by the number of police we have to enforce it. But I will say that they have, from what I can tell, they've done a pretty good job this first week, especially with all the distractions we've had. Not perfect, don't get me wrong. We've had a couple who I thought were maybe a little overbearing and I wouldn't say it was a, an advisory kind of thing, uh, which I really wanted them to do more of an advisory thing and begin with, "Hey, did you know we have a curfew, this is what it is." Now you know, that's not even really a warning. The second time, a warning. Third time, if it's deliberate, then a citation. That's where we are on the curfew. I would welcome the council's, uh, support and endorsement of that. Or any questions you have about it, but that's where that is. And Andre, do you wanna add anything to that? Andre?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah. It occurs with the mayor, see, the, the issue was, city attorneys were all, uh, we were all meeting last Friday just by email and, uh, this, this was given by the city, Little Rock city attorney, and I talked to him. I sent the group of text messages, a group of email regarding this and, uh, the reason, this is an enforcement with the governor's doing, it's also enforcement just, just in general for the local mayors. And I sent you all the statutes that gives the mayor wide latitude. That when I talked to John Wilkinson of the municipal, he had said that he, uh, covered, but they really wanted the city council to approve because, uh, there are constitutional issues at bay. And what I mean by the constitution issues, every citizen has a right on the United States Constitution to travel and it affects interstate commerce and et cetera, uh, and this is a restriction on that. Uh, it is a reasonable restriction that the municipal league is willing to defend and they're willing to defend it because they believe there's necessary public health and safety and welfare of the citizens of the state of Arkansas. But in addition to the mayor doing it, they wanted to make sure the city council approved this, it would be a policy of, of both because they didn't wanna loophole it in, in the potential litigation in case something happens. And, uh, the mayor does one thing and the city council does the other thing. Uh, but I have nothing else to add other than what the mayor's already said, I concur with what he's already said.
Now, I, I would add one thing, if I didn't already, just to be, um, clear. There is a medical exception, so anybody with a medical emergency. In fact, anybody who is, uh, although you don't have many pharmacies in our, pharmacies in our town that are open, um, late, but, um, if medical, if somebody is, can demonstrate that they're, they really are having to get medicine, then, then that's an exception. Any kind of job or work-related travel, so that includes independent contractors, that includes people coming in and out. And then, of course, any, any emergency responder, anything in that field. And I almost said reception to it, you know, there's some exceptions to this and, and I probably don't hear all the negative comments anyway because, because I did it. But I've heard some of them, believe me. The nine o'clock, probably the biggest question is why nine o'clock? The answer to that is that's the one that Little Rock and most of the cities have adopted. And it seems to be working for them. Uh, that, that's really the, the main reason. I mean, I, I didn't go into, I was really concerned and Andre was too. If we have something that's been approved by the municipal league and the governor's office, then I didn't really wanna, uh, vary, vary from that at all. Not, not one, one bit because, um, if for any reason we need them, we will need, we might need the municipal league, uh, to represent us. So I didn't wanna bury one comma away from that. So it's exactly the way it is as it's been approved, um, by them. That's the real, that's the real reason, I didn't give a lot of thought into the time, I'll be honest. Having said that, most of our, um, restaurants, grocery stores, um, called me to voluntarily, voluntarily, um, I think, uh, to voluntarily close at 8:30, 9 o'clock. They might stay open to clean or something like that, but close to the public and, and I didn't ask them to do that. They called me and, um, and let me know that's what they wanted to do. And now, of course, the whole purpose of this, although it's gotten a little muddied because of the electrical outages, the whole original purpose of this was, uh, the COVID crisis and to try and get people from congregating. And it's still not perfect and I don't wanna hold that out. And I also don't wanna say for certain we haven't given any citations, I can't say that as a matter of fact. Uh, I wish I had, we had an incident earlier today and I haven't checked on that. Let's see if we have, I know the last time I checked on it, we hadn't, I'm just saying that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, it, it's, it's for... Oh, I'm...
If I made it.
Hundred and, the hundred, is it 190, it's not 190, it's on, how many days? 120.
120.
I've heard a lot about the 120. And Andre can help us out here, but the real reason for that is just so it doesn't have to be done over and over again. But it also says right, Andre, that when the governor's ends his, this ends, right?
That's correct. Uh, one other thing I want to say is one exception that, uh, the mayor spoke on briefly, but I just wanted to sound, uh, is citizens, people from other states, they still have the right to travel, so if police officer stops them and they're, they're on business or someone outside of the city comes through, they still have the right to keep on going. Uh, this is just to deal with the people within our jurisdiction.
That's right. So I think if we don't, if we're not overbearing in our enforcement and, and we're reasonable, use common sense, I'm not promising you that we will do, but in every case, but if that's our goal, I think this will be effective and it already has been somewhat effective. I would, I would argue. And I know a lot of people don't like it, but, um, it, it certainly taxes our resources, um, on the one hand. On the other hand, you know, many people have said it has reduced crime and it's reduced the social gathering problem that we've had. I, I'm gonna be quiet though, let anybody else talk or ask questions.
Well, one thing, one thing I want to say about it is, this was implemented by, by Tom Cobb, the city attorney for Little Rock. He got it approved by Mark Hayes and John Wilkinson of the municipal, as well as by the governor's office and this council. Jonesboro has passed it, uh, as of last Friday, as well as Bitten and two or three other cities. Several cities have taken it because this is basically a template that everybody uses in, in the municipal league so they can, they were willing to defend this template. And so that's why the mayor's only did it like a plug and play. He replaced, he took Little Rock out and put Helen in, I think that's basically all the changes is there.
And I, I can't imagine it lasting that long, but it, you know, it, it, it does say that in there. Any, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Chris?
Uh, well, not a question, I just want you to respond to something. We would, we wouldn't have, we'd be having this discussion, you know, I've asked you several times to get with the city council or call us, to invite us or to, to keep us posted on what's going on. This was posted on your Facebook page, somebody screenshotted something to me because we're not friends, but you are, you, you do something and then have to come back to us once you, once it fails. You, you need all approval to do something. You should do, I told you, I asked you, could you let us know, same thing about the, the COVID testing and all these other things that have happened in the last, uh, 30 days? I've, I've asked, the city council's behind, we don't know anything that goes on with, with the COVID-19. If we're not friends of yours on Facebook, we don't, the city council is in the dark. And I've asked you several times, Mayor, can you let us in? Tell us what's going on, even with the power outage, uh, we, you know, we were on our own. We don't never know anything from, from you. And I think the citizens think that, you know, we're giving you a hard time or whatever, but you don't communicate with the city council. This not has been a problem, just started, this has been a problem since you started.
Mr. Franklin, did you, did you not get, did you not get Andre's email? About the...
I didn't, Mr. Mayor, I didn't do...
Did you not read it?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't interrupt you.
You got the email, did you read it or not? It was sent out Monday, you know, I think it was, something was sent out Friday. Did you read, did you read that, did you read that email?
I'm, I'm talking, I didn't interrupt you.
Did you read it?
Did you read it?
Of course I did and it was sent to you. You act like we haven't sent it to you, but you did get it and you haven't read it, apparently.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna go back and forth with you, I just...
Well, then don't attack me.
I want, I want, I want...
And don't use this time to attack me for something that's not fair. You knew about it and, and now you wanna, now you wanna make a speech about it, but the truth is, you did know about it.
I did know about it, how can you tell me I did not know about it? And I wish that you, I, I don't wanna argue with you, I just said what I said. You had the time to talk, when it's my turn to talk, you wanna cut us off? That's what it is, we don't...
But I'm not accusing you of anything, you're accusing me of something that's not true. That's a big difference there, Chris.
Okay, okay, it may be a big difference, I, I don't wanna argue with you, I'm sick of arguing with you, I just said what I had to say. I'm not gonna disrespect you because, you know, your position. But please, sir, when I'm talking, give me the same respect as I give you, is that understood? Cause you're gonna...
I don't think you were showing me much respect.
But I, hey, hey, I show you respect, I'm just telling you what you've been doing. Yeah, we can vote on this or whatever, but I'm not gonna let you get loud with me, I'm not, I, we, we're gonna keep it like this. I just told you what it was, this is what is, Andre is not the mayor, Andre is the city attorney. When things happen, you go to Facebook before you contact us. Now you want us to clean up something that you did mess up? When things happen, you go to Facebook before you contact us. Now you want us to clean up something that you did messed up. So now we're going to clean it up.
Well, explain to me what I've messed up. Cause I don't think I've messed up. And all I'm saying is if you want to support the the curfew, then you have an opportunity to do that and I would love to have it. But I haven't made any mistakes on it. I did exactly what I should have done as the mayor in an emergency. That's what's called an emergency. You were notified. And you don't have to be my Facebook friend to follow the mayor's Facebook page. You're on Facebook. You know what's going on. If you want to call me about it, you can. If you, and as far as email, the mayor's email, I haven't been able to get on it. And for days, because we've been really busy. But, you know, I don't think if you're, if you don't know what's going on, you're the only one in town that doesn't, Chris, because I think everybody else seems to.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Joe St. Columbia.
Yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I certainly agree with this curfew. I go to bed sometimes eight, eight, eight thirty. But I'd like it to go on record that the Helena City Council supports the mayor's initiative for putting in force a curfew like you did. And I'd like it to go on record that the Helena City Council supported their mayor in doing, taking such action. And that's my motion.
Okay, this is the most, thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. There's a motion by Mr. St. Columbia. That the city council support the the curfew. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, not hearing a second. Give everybody a chance to unmute. If there's no seconds, motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, let's move on.
Well, I have a, I have a comment. Because I.
Mr. Edley.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree with what Mr. Franklin said, and I said so in my, in my text messages in the group. It's not about whether you got an email on Friday. It's about official action of the city being announced without a vote of the council and then coming back and asking the council to ratify, which is the message that we got on Monday or Tuesday or whatever, to ratify the action. We don't get notice and we do have email and we don't get notice of things that are going on. Sometimes I hear about them. People refer me to your Facebook page. And I just believe that in certain situations, we all represent the citizens of Helena, what's telling us. If we communicate and work together is to the benefit of everybody in the city of Helena, what's telling us. But if we're having to find out at the same time everybody else does, because I had people, I literally got tagged on a Facebook post and asking me, what was this all about? And I'm finding out at the same time everybody else is finding out that it's been announced to the city. So my point that I made in the text message and my point that I make now is if it's something that requires or needs council approval, then get council approval. There was no need for it to be announced to the citizens without council approval. It could have easily been obtained. And it's not just on this issue. It's on a variety of issues. Here we are today and we're talking about budget issues from 2019 needing council approval for things that were not brought to the council before they actually happened. So if you don't need approval on the front end, we don't have to talk about it in the meeting. If you do need approval, it only takes two hours notice to the press. We're doing these meetings electronically now, which makes them easier than ever for us to get together. And we could have easily reviewed this and approved it prior to it being announced to the citizens. And so if it's being enforced, it's being enforced with the support of the council. Personally, people might have had questions or issues that they wanted to raise in a meeting setting. And, and that wasn't allowed to any member of the council to simply say, I've done something and now I need you to ratify it. It's simply not good enough. If it needs council approval, it should be brought to the council prior to that going into action.
My only response to that would be, the only time we could have done that, well, first of all, I think I need to clear something up. What, what the email pointed out, there are two things. There's an executive order and then there's a city council ordinance. I would prefer we have an ordinance also. But a executive order has the same effect, at least in the meantime. And that's what we did and it was emailed out to everybody. On Monday morning, we were facing not only a lack of internet, but we had a lack of cellular coverage. We were still trying to get our dispatch working.
I don't get even.
We had a lot of we had a lot of communication problems. And then we had eighty percent of our community without street lights or any kind of lights in their home. And lighting is probably the most important thing or aspect of safety. So really, that executive order got more significant, had more significance on Monday than it did on Friday because of the electrical outages. This is the first city council meeting we've had. All I'm saying is, if you want to support it, I would love to have it. I think an ordinance would be a good idea. But I was pretty clear about what, what this was all about in that email on Friday and Monday. So I'm not, I think maybe there's some confusing about how it's been portrayed perhaps, but and I think I think now's your chance to, to weigh in. You've had a week to listen to it, but we've also had a very busy week and Monday and Tuesday particularly were very difficult when it comes to communication at all. And it's been a difficult week all week. We have people this morning, you still did not have power. Those kinds of things literally define an emergency. And it's why you have a mayor. It's why people out here have a mayor. To act quickly and deliberately for their best interest. If you think I'm doing something that's not in their best interest, then that is certainly your purview to say so. But I certainly don't regret anything I've done or how I've characterized it. I'm not going to say I couldn't probably email y'all more often. I'll try and I'm going to try to do that. I said that at the last meeting and, but I haven't, I haven't been on my mayor's email page. So this week, I'm not, I'm not sure when it was even up and running. I think City Hall got emailed yesterday. I got internet yesterday. I don't get it on my phone. So you know, I'm a little bit limited this week more than most. So I'll certainly accept whatever responsibility that I deserve, but I'm not going to take blame for something that I don't. And so anyway, any, any other comments?
Yeah, if I, if I would, I would just respond quickly by saying this. It's not about whether you believe it's in the best interest of the citizens or not. The issue is about process. If we had time to receive messages saying that we needed to schedule a meeting to ratify, we could have received a message that said, we need to meet on the corner at City Hall and stand six feet apart and approve this issue. It's an emergency. And I'm sure that we would have gotten a quorum to gather and do that. There was really no desire to do that, is what I'm saying. There was the expectation that we would get together and approve whatever happens. And the problem is, is going forward, if we, if we constantly roll over and give in to things that have been done without the process is necessary to do it properly, then we will be forever trying to patchwork things that have been done without our knowledge. And, and if there's time to get people together to meet, if it's truly an emergency, and I think this was an emergency, but it was an emergency with time to take proper action. There was, there was, this was not an emergency that lacked the, the time necessary to take the appropriate action. I'll never agree that it was. But if there, if there's truly an emergency and there's no time to take appropriate action, then it just has to happen. But if there's time to get a council, a quorum together, we should always do that.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you that we wouldn't have, I wouldn't have had time until the earliest Wednesday and I didn't have internet and barely had cellular service. So I mean, I guess what I'm saying is now is a good time. It's only been a week and you don't have to do it, but, but now is an opportunity to do that. I don't want to address one thing you said. It's my understanding that for years now, the council has approved cleanup budgets for purposes of straightening it out for legislative audit several years in the past. I think that's what you're referring to. If we don't want to proceed that way going forward, it would have been good to know that last year. But we can go, we can certainly move that way this year and, and it's, it really doesn't bother me at all. That's the way, probably the way we should go forward, but that's not how the city has been going forward. The city's been doing cleanup budgets for years and I don't really, the, the, the major items that correct that budget are probably less significant than they were last year when you adopted it. If it's, you know, I just want to address that issue. But anyway, other comments? About the quorum. Okay, if not, I don't want to belabor it. We'll move on to approval of resolution five, which is kind of what I was talking about, I guess, amendment to the 2019 operating budget. Mr. Turner, do you want to address it? Mr. Turner?
Do you hear me?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I've addressed it over the past couple of meetings. It's, if the council wants to, it's on the table. And so if at any point in time they want to revisit it, it's fine with me. But I don't want to be, you know, a dead horse, so.
Nor do I, and I'm just going to say this as plainly as I can. We did it last year and you've done it in previous years. If we don't want to do that for 2020, then actually, that's okay with me. I would almost rather do it that way. It's a lot cleaner and it's a lot easier and it's the way most, at least other governments have dealt. If this is just designed to embarrass the city of legislative audit in spite of having a pretty, pretty good year financially, then it's, in my opinion, it's ill advised.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Joe St. Columbia, City Councilman. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution five, amendment to the 2019 operating budget. I make a motion that we, the city council, move forward and do the right thing and vote for this. I make a motion to do so.
Thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. Make some motion that we adopt resolution number five, amendment to the 2019 operating budget. Is there a second? I ask you one more time, is there a second on resolution number five? Not motion fails for lack of a second.
Let's move on.
Okay, last item on the budget is the approval of urban deer hunt ordinance number nine. Andre? You ready?
Yes, I'm sorry. The urban deer hunt, it's basically identical language from the package you have given. You have had a meeting where representatives from the Arkansas Game and Fish came to explain it to you as well as you had a public hearing. We had no objections. And the city, the planning commission also reviewed. They had no objections. There's a second part we had adopted later and that's the map. Code enforcement, because we've been out, we haven't finalized the map, but, but we need this adopted by May the fifth to them. But the language comes from the, the overall sheet that's come from, all those points come directly from the requirements for urban deer hunt on you all will be adopting every recommendation they had on the sheet. If you so.
So move.
Is that the third and final read, read the title on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Franklin moves that we move, that we put ordinance number nine on third and final reading. Is there a second?
Joe St. Columbia, I second it.
St. Columbia, second to motion, any other discussion about ordinance number nine, the approval of urban deer hunt ordinance? If not, call the grow.
Okay, Davis? St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Davis?
Monica muted.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Number nine, 2020 is an ordinance authorized urban deer hunt within the city limits of the city of Helena, Westside, Arkansas for purposes. That needs to be.
Mr. Franklin moves adoption of ordinance number nine, approval of urban deer hunt. Is there a second?
St. Columbia, second.
Mr. St. Columbia, second to motion, any other discussion about ordinance number nine, approval of urban deer hunt? If not, call the grow.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, the ordinance number nine passes. Do we need to do an emergency or not?
No.
No. Any other questions about that, Andre? Are we done on that besides the map?
Yes, besides the map, we'll adopt the map independently once Greg and I and the rest of code enforcement get the area that we want. The planning commission voted, oh, by the way, the planning commission voted, they said they deferred the code enforcement for setting the, the boundaries. And I assume that you all would do the same thing. Is that correct?
Yeah. Sorry. Okay. Any other questions about that? If not, I don't see anything else on the agenda. Make a motion. Franklin makes a motion, is there a second?
No, I have a question.
Mr. No second? Go ahead, you have a question.
Well, Mr. Turner was talking about the finances. I was trying to ask a question then. I heard you all saying that we already was, the final part was already over budgeted. Almost out of their overtime spending money.
No, that's not what he said.
I didn't say they were over. I said they were, they were getting close.
Yeah, okay. So my thing is with the hiring, since we've, we've had somebody to leave code enforcement, right? Mr. Turner?
Oh, yes.
So, so to kind, to kind of help the city save some money. How much, that's, that's twenty eight thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
I want, I, since we talked about the budget, I want to move to remove one of those positions since, to, to help out with finances, to remove one of those positions out of the budget.
Well, you know, Mr. Franklin, I've already said that I'm not going to hire any non-essential personnel or non-emergency personnel. Until we get, until we see what the finances look like after we get through the virus ordeal.
One.
Was that to to zero the appropriation for that?
Yes, sir, to zero that line out for the, for the third person, because you already have two. So for the second person, it's making, I think it's twenty eight?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's keep it zeroing it out, please.
So you want to zero out the second type position?
Yes, sir.
I guess.
No, the third.
The third. What?
I get what you're saying.
Number.
Position.
Yeah, I think, I think he's saying freeze it where it is. So whatever's been spent, that's the, that's the appropriation, whatever's currently been spent, that would be the appropriation for the, for the year, to amend it to that number.
Thank you, Mr. Etherly.
I missed something. Who is the, I mean, did someone leave? Someone?
We had a vacancy in the code, one of the code positions in the last week or so. As I said a couple of weeks ago, I'm not going to fill any, any of those positions for the time being anyway. So I guess I, I'm, I'm not going to mention names, but we had a person leave. And we, we aren't advertising it anyway. And we, we aren't advertising it anyway, we're, we're gonna. Hey, basically, Mr. Franklin wants to support that with a motion that I'm, because we're not gonna fill it right now anyway. Now, after, once we see where the, uh, city is financially in a few months, then that might change. But, um, for now, it's not being filled or, or advertised anyway, so.
So where, and another question with that, where are we with overtime with code enforcement department? How is the overtime in that department?
Well, it's very low, I don't know what it is.
Let me see. Now, like I said, Mr. Franklin, that, all that information is included on your transcript before.
Yes, sir.
This, uh, on page, uh, four, they have so far through March, seven hundred and three.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Yes, sir.
So there's a motion, can you restate your motion? Mr. Franklin?
Yes, sir.
Restate.
I, I, I move to freeze, uh, the financial, I mean, the, to freeze the position, the, what, to stop where we are on the financial side of it, we, we, we hold on that. Whatever Mr. Etherly said, that's what I'm gonna put it, yeah, how about that?
Why don't I just, why don't I just make the motion?
Mr. Edley?
The, the code enforcement, uh, employee who recently left the city, uh, whichever position that person occupies in the budget, wanted to freeze it at its current level, whatever has been expended in that line item, and make that the, uh, budget appropriation for the remainder of the year.
Second. Who's second in the motion?
Me, Chris Franklin.
Mr. Franklin, second some motion, Mr. Edley makes the motion. Any other discussion on the motion? It's not called, bro.
Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
abstain.
Davis? Forward, yes, one extension, Ms. Davis?
And motion passes. All right, any other? All right, if not, Mr. St. Columbia, you will make that motion again?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Don said that, said that in here. All right, no objections, main station, sir, thank you very much.